Okay, it's nine o'clock. I'll call this meeting to order.
Hacker.
Here.
Delozer. Halem.
Here.
Mr. Delozer would like to introduce the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Halem, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes, sir. Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for your hand of mercy and grace. Father God, we ask that you watch over all the citizens of this county, Father of this great United States and this state of Oklahoma. Father God, we just thank you for your blessing, for it's in Christ, and we pray. Amen.
Okay, item number five, approve or disapprove of a ministry September 23rd, 2013. We have a motion for item number five.
Second.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, gentlemen, do you have any new business here, item six?
No.
Okay, item seven, announcements? Mr. Delozer? You may know this on your agenda, that the budget maker is not here today. It's not on the agenda here. It's on the schedule, so, uh, anyway, next week. Item number eight, unfinished business. Discussion possible action regarding cleaning crew access to Division One courtroom. Decided was tabled from September 16th and September 23rd. Is, uh, Mr. Harrison present? Okay, make a motion that we strike this from the, from the next agenda.
Wait one second.
Second.
I'm sorry, I couldn't do that. Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number two, award bid 628 Automated Workforce Management System, HR. This item was tabled from the six, from September 16th and September 23rd.
I'll need to reject all bids.
Say again?
I need to reject all bids.
Okay. Second.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number three, discussion possible action regarding voice and data equipment for EOC, Scotty Stokes. This item was tabled from September 16th and September 23rd. Director Stokes.
Uh, this is the switch for the EOC phone and data systems, and we're, we're still trying to, I was talking to Commissioner Delozer about it, and we're still trying to find where the money is exactly going to come from. The biggest problem is this is going to be a two-month from the time we were before we get it, so, that's the main thing to, to think about in this whole process, is it's going to take a little bit of time before we do get it, once we decide, so. And I don't think we really know where it's going to come from just yet.
Biggest issue I've got on this is finding out where the funding can come from. Uh, you know, we don't know where we were, or exactly where we are on the courthouse money yet. We should be getting those results before long, so.
Keep in touch.
Yeah, I think as soon as we get all the budget stuff lined up and get that, I think we'll know a little bit more, so. I don't know if we want to table this, or just put it back on whenever, I would, I would say let's take it off the agenda and, and put it back on whenever we figure something out.
It's fine with me. Make a motion to strike this from the agenda.
Second.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved from the agenda.
Item number four, discuss and possible action regarding consider and adopt a resolution appropriating certain sales and use tax proceeds to Rogers County Funding Authority. Ms. Teresa, are you talking about this?
This is Mr. Joe Hanny.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
He'll be here later.
Um, we can take no action on this when he arrives. What time did you say?
10:30.
Around 10:30. Are you gentlemen okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, item number five, discussion possible action regards to employee payroll accounts, human resources. This item was tabled from September 3rd, 9th, 16th, and 23rd, incrementally.
Um, I think what we have come up with is from this point forward, any cash fund employees will be paid from their cash fund. Essentially, it's, um, the non-budgeted employees, so right now, your employees that are budgeted into the general fund that we're going to be splitting between the cash and the general fund, those are budgeted, so those are fine. So anything from here, from this point today, if approved on, it'll be right out of their cash fund, and there won't be a split between the general fund and the cash fund. Does that make sense? It's just essentially all non-budgeted employees that are coming from your cash fund, well all, all their benefits will have to be paid from the cash fund as well.
Okay, so, what we talked about in the budget meeting the other day is the way we're going to do it. Where we, the ones that are already coming out, we're going to leave like they, like it is.
Right, right, because they're essentially budgeted. We did budget for them, they're already in the general fund to be paid for their benefits, they're considered a budgeted employee.
So any new, any new employees?
Coming from the cash fund.
Okay, but the cash fund, the ones that were paying out of the cash fund, now we're going to leave just like that?
Right, is that right?
Isn't that what we discussed?
Yeah.
Okay, any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll still move.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number six, discussion possible action regarding contract with peak uptime for the purchase and installation of Shore Tele telephone system at the Rogers County Election Board. Uh, this item was tabled September, from September 23rd.
It needs to be tabled for one week.
Okay, motion to table for one week?
Second.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and tabled one week.
Okay, Madam Clerk, do we have anything under zoning?
No.
Flats?
No, all the way down.
Roads and bridges?
All the way down to blanket purchase orders.
Item number 16, blanket purchase orders. Number one or two, one only?
Number one only.
Okay, could you read those off, please?
Sheriff to Correctional Dell Services for $2,000. Sheriff to Bronman Oil for $1,000. Sheriff to Westwood Pharmacy $6,000. Sheriff to Medical Compliance Specialty $400. Sheriff to St. Francis Outreach Services $1,200. Sheriff to PHS Mobile X-Room $600. Sheriff to Warehouse Market $260. Sheriff to Bimbo Bakeries $1,365. Sheriff to U.S. Foods $825. Sheriff to Performance Food Group $6,000. Sheriff to Cisco Foods $3,500. Sheriff to Farmers Brothers Coffee $300. Sheriff to Combat Mastercard $13,000. Sheriff to Rogers County District 1 for fuel $2,000. District 3 to American Waste Control for pull and reset the yard dusters $5,175. District 3 to Meriflex Hose and Accessories for various trucking equipment parts $500. District 3 to R&amp;S Auto Parts for the same item, $500. That's all.
Okay, make a motion to approve?
Second.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, item number 17, grants, Mr. Armstrong, I believe there's still stuff in traffic. Uh, he will be here, hopefully, knowing the terrible, we can move on to item number 19. Agenda item number one, update by BKO in Quirky, we're running the courthouse and, um, Waltham Center. You know, here representing him. Hmm? Did you have anything about item number one you wanted to share? Item number two, presentation by Roland Rhodes with Sam's Club to offer Rogers County Courthouse Employee Group membership. Is Mr. Rhodes here? Good morning.
We'd just like to have permission to come in and speak to all of your, you know, kind of Commissioner Associates, everyone that's involved, you know, talking about the club that's opening in Alawas, so if I can, you can send us there, we can, that's exclusive to the area, and talk about the benefits that we brought into the community as well.
Anything? What were you wanting, wanting to present to the employees? Do they get a discount? What's the, what's the story here?
We'd like to come into the city offices, talk to them about our membership opportunities. We have an, you know, exclusive offer as, just for our club that's opening up in Alawas, so, just talking about the benefits of the membership, opportunities for their businesses here, for their families, things of that nature.
Um, you just want to set up like a, sort of a, a book? Did you have something?
Sorry, this will be during our open enrollment health fair.
Oh, okay.
Um, we're wanting him to come in on the 6th and 7th of November and sit with us while all of our health vendors are there.
What were you, what were you saying about opportunities for businesses here?
Well, we want to make sure that we can make ourselves available to all small businesses within the Claretmore and surrounding areas where our club's opening up in Alawas, so it's just a great opportunity to help them and their businesses grow and develop.
Okay, the only issue I've got on this is this taking taxpayers' money out of Rogers County and taking it into Tulsa County. You know, Sam's is in Tulsa County, it's not in Rogers, and, uh, you know, we try to get people to spend their money in Rogers County, that, that's the only issue I've got with that.
Did you just want to give, you just want an opportunity to present this to Rogers County employees and?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve that.
Second.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay. Item number three, remove Elizabeth Payne and Amanda Mosley as receiving agents for the court clerk, appoint Sonia Latrell, literal, li, li, I don't, how much?
Literal.
Literal. And Kathy Edwards as receiving agents. Ms. Henry.
Mrs. Payne is retiring the 31st, and Amanda Mosley is going up to work in the court system, so we need to switch those out.
Okay, second.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, item number four was, we have several, um, resolutions for disposing of equipment from the court clerk's office. Do you gentlemen care if we do these together? Okay, item number four, resolution for disposing of equipment, three counters with rolling shelving, ID numbers are in your agenda, a cornerstone computer monitor, a CMQ computer monitor, two IBM typewriters, three rigid print date stamps, roller shelving system, and resolution for disposing of equipment, court clerk under number 10, that says items are all under the $500 limit. The whereabouts of some of these items is unknown, as they were left in the old courthouse. All these were to be junked, items four through 10. Second.
I've got one question.
Okay, go ahead.
The items on number 10, do you have a list of those items?
Um, Jennifer does, but.
Right here.
Right here.
It's, um, yeah, it was stuff that we didn't realize had to be only, if it's under $500, it doesn't have to be only in inventory. They put everything on the inventory, so.
Okay.
I mean, it might be in one shelf that was over there or something, just minor as that. Most of it was removed, except for the roller shelving, and then there were a few old, really torn up file cabinets that we left over there.
Bless you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Was there a motion?
No.
Oh, yes, there was, I'm sorry.
Motion to dismiss, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. Was there a vote yet?
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, item number 11, discussion possible action regarding memorandum of understanding with the City of Tulsa, Department of Public Safety, and Rogers County Board of County Commissioners for access to OKWEN Network. Commissioner Delozer.
Ms. Hamilton?
This is an understanding between us and, um, Tulsa and the State of Oklahoma, Department of Public Safety, giving us access to their network, that's a radio access, the 800 radios.
This is the same one we've done before? Motion to approve?
Second.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Commissioners, did we finish on number eight, item number eight, did y'all talk about the cleaning stuff on number one, or are y'all coming back to that?
Number eight?
On item eight, number one.
Resolution for disposing?
The unfinished business.
Item number eight. We're going to come back to it?
Okay, I'll just make it through.
No, 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 the cleaning?
Yes.
No, there was no one here to represent that.
Judge Stottley's here now.
All right, I'll go on to it. Do you have any information on that?
Yes, if you want to hear it.
We can go back.
Or we can wait till later, it's up to you.
No, we can go back, you're a busy man. All right, unfinished business, item number eight, discussion possible action regarding cleaning crew access to Division One courtroom.
Sure. Can you, can you send that one?
Yeah, that's what's going to be said, can you resend?
So it was, uh, Delozer made a motion and Halem seconded it.
For item one?
Just to strike, right.
Just to strike from the agenda, yeah.
I don't think I made that motion. I've got Commissioner Halem, or Hacker made the motion and Halem seconded it.
That's correct.
Okay.
Kind of, I rescind my motion.
I'm sorry.
I rescind. My second.
Okay.
Okay.
So, we do a roll call, we resend?
Yes, please.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried to resend.
Okay, Judge Stottley.
And I apologize for being late, Commissioner. Um, I, I think two things, number one, I've talked with the court administrator's office, and they haven't given me what I would call definitive answer, but it's their belief that they can execute an affidavit of waiver, and also that they can, they've asked me to prepare a contract between the court fund and the cleaning organization that would also indemnify, and when I do that, I'm going to include not only of the court fund, but also the county as well. She's already executed an affidavit on behalf of the court fund, I'm now going to ask her to execute one on behalf of the county as well. Uh, she's talked with her attorney as well, and it's their belief that that should take care of this too, so that's kind of where we're at, and that's what we've asked, that you allow us to do. Obviously, you can't do anything today because you don't have that in front of you. I'll try to get it back to you all as soon as possible. I'll stand for any questions you have.
Uh, do you think you have it by next Monday?
I'm going to try.
Okay.
Uh, I'm having, unfortunately, I'm the lawyer who's going to have to draft this agreement, so I've got to try to work that in between other stuffs. I will make every effort to do so, sir.
Okay, if you, uh, if you want to bring that, we can put it back on the agenda if you'll let me know. If not, we can wait another week or a week.
I'll let you know by Wednesday, 3rd, which, which?
Wednesday.
Okay, I'll let you know by Wednesday.
Okay.
Was there any questions?
Any questions?
No.
No, sir.
And I'll make sure that, before I get that to you, that I also get copies of that to Mr. Iskey, so he can look at it as well.
Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you.
Do I have your permission to leave, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, we can table. Well, no, if, if, if he brings it by Wednesday, we'll, I'll put it back on, if not, it won't be on.
You have to do something, don't you?
You have to do something, it's, it's, I think, discussion and possible action, you've had your discussion, so you can just simply vote that no action is needed today, or you could table it, either way, but you've had discussion.
Yeah, we could just table it, and then it'll be on. I'll make a motion to table for one week.
Second.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye.
Motion's been carried, table one eight.
Okay, we're down to, we're down to number 11. Number 12, under item 19, reimbursement and resolution 2014 dash three to deposit funds of $554.09 into 83ST 200 for assessor's fuel. Uh, we can do these together if you, gentlemen.
Go ahead.
Reimbursement and resolution 2014 dash three to deposit funds of $1,269.18 into 81ST 200 for sheriff fuel. Item 14, reimbursement and resolution 2014 dash 44 to deposit funds of $23,288.13 into 20 dash 200 for half of the utilities for the courthouse from the court clerk. Item number 15, reimbursement and resolution 2014 dash 45 to deposit funds of $62,044 into 20 dash 200 for insurance for criminal justice authority, and that is all.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Sure.
Uh, 12 and 13 both refer to the same resolution.
Um, yes, they do.
We, uh, we reuse the same resolution for fuel.
Then how do you distinguish one, the action taken on one from action taken on another, whether or not it's approved or not? How do you distinguish that for the official records?
By putting one into 83ST 200 and the other one into 81ST 200. It's resolution.
It's a standing resolution.
You want to look at it?
It's not necessary for me to look at it, but the point being, we do things so people can go back and review records that we've done, and if the distinguishing point is the date, you know, as long as there's some distinction. So we will never use resolution 20 dash 14 dash three for that fund again for the rest of the fiscal year.
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Teresa, you want to talk on that? Because this is the way that's, no, it's the way that I've seen they've been doing it is, now, I'm not sure if there's one resolution for the assessor and one resolution for the sheriff, so they both included on that one resolution, okay? So that resolution is a standing number, just like the election board uses all year long, they'll use that same resolution number, and it would just have different journal entries added to it.
And you add.
New date and accounts.
And you distinguish it by the account that it goes in. Uh, District 3's 83ST 200 went in there, uh, District 1 went into 81ST 200. Is this when we got into the numbering of the resolutions a while back, that, that kind of?
My, my point is, and, and, and I'm just going to repeat what I just said, the point of a resolution is so people can go back after today to show what we did, if they want to look at what we did, they know what we did on a particular day. If we have one resolution number that's being used multiple times, the person who's looking for that action won't actually be able to see what action was done on that resolution, because it will be, this, it will be displaced by months, it could be. That's my point, y'all do what you want to do.
So you, you really think it would be better if every time we do one of these, we use a new resolution?
All I'm going to say is.
Which would distinguish it better?
The point of doing a resolution is to tell people what official action this board has taken.
Correct.
And, and when a person wants to go and review what you all have done, I think it is problematic that they won't be able to see all the action taken on a particular resolution number if that same number is used in multiple locations.
Is it, are all these resolutions under that one, I mean, all these transfers under that one resolution in, in a file? Is that what?
Yes, we have a resolution.
They're all together?
We have a resolution, and this is the way that it's always been done. I don't mind changing it, I'm open to any change whatsoever, this is the way it's always been done. Christine brings these down and prepares these.
Well, what they are is they're reoccurring resolutions that we get, you know, like sheriff's fuel, assessor's fuel, they're reoccurring resolutions, they, they're given one resolution number, they're booked and paged separately, because they're by district or whatever, so they'll be.
Uh, but I'm also understanding, Madam Clerk, that there is a separate folder for resolution number three, and all of these actions, whenever they're taken, July, October, January, anybody can go to the folder for resolution number three and see those separate actions.
It's entered into the system that way.
But it's in, in, in a folder that way. And if I look on there, I mean, I see what you're saying.
We have a list, we have a list of the different resolutions.
Let's just change, make it a different resolution every time.
But we're, I'm open to change, however.
I think it'd be clever to, it's never been a problem, but it, that's mine.
So be 2014 dash four instead of three?
Unless there already is one.
Or yours?
We may get it to 2014 dash four.
Yeah, they could.
I'm sure there is, because we're at 2005.
We'd have to change them all, yeah.
To approve one, and then take the other one, turn it back till next week.
I'm, I'm supposing that the reason that they did that is because, uh, there's something in that statute with the election board getting the reimbursements, where they can reuse that one resolution the entire year. I'm not, I know it's there, but I don't know exactly what it says, and somehow, when the legislature did that procedure for putting the election board money back in the general fund, it's understanding to me that it's to use one resolution for that entire year. So that's probably how that got started.
I'm going to make a motion, we tabled 12 and 13, and go ahead with 14 and 15, make a motion to table the 12 and 13 and approve 14 and 15. And then we'll change the numbers on 12 and 13 for next week.
Maybe.
Maybe.
Hacker.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Halem.
Aye, question.
Sir.
Item number 15, we're reimbursing the general fund for $62,044 even. Now, Teresa, we budgeted out all the money for criminal justice. This is coming out of criminal justice fund, right, and back into the general fund?
It is, because this is a deal that they would pay directly from that fund, but I'm not sure if it was timing or what the circumstances were, but it was delayed in payment, so the general fund paid it, and they'll reimburse it in the general fund, so they make a direct payment.
Okay.
And the board voted, the board voted to do that.
John, you know.
Trust me.
John, can we make sure we let, I may have acknowledged that, because I'm not sure that we did that when we approved the budget for criminal justice? And I just wanted to have a heads up.
I do.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Um, item number 16, discussion possible action to enter executive session pursuant to Home Statutes 25-307B4 for the purpose of confidential communications between a public body and its attorney concerning a pending investigation claim or action of the public body with the advice of its attorney determines that the disclosure, that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding to the public interest to win Rogers County. Case number CJ 2006 dash 684, Board of County Commissioners of Rogers County versus John Stephen Jennings. To win Rogers County, case number CJ 2006-684, Board of County Commissioners of Rogers County versus John Stephen Jennings. Uh, Mr. Iskey, is your recommendation to go into executive session?
It is.
Make a motion, go into executive session. At 9:28.
Hacker?
Aye.
Delozer? Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried, go into executive session.
Okay, it's 10:25. I'll make a motion to adjourn executive session and reenter regular session.
Hacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm? Motion's been carried to adjourn executive session and enter regular session.
Item number 18, discussion of possible action regarding executive session item Rogers County case, Board of County Commissioners of Rogers County versus John Stephen Jennings. I'm going to make a motion, uh, well, before, I'll just tell you what we're, we're discussing a bridge issue over in Catoosa. It's been going on since 2003. It was in District Two, it's now District Three. Uh, we're having some issues with driveway. And so I'm going to make a motion that we ask our attorney, Mr. Kim Ritchie, to dismiss the case and refile that, that case to get this thing moving. And then also, Mr. Iskey, is, do we need to pass this resolution?
Yeah, pass the resolution and to, uh, make a motion to retain Mr. Ritchie for the new condemnation.
Motion's made on number 18.
What was the motion?
That we, that we ask, uh, to dismiss this case and this, and if it approved number 19, then we will ask Mr. Ritchie to refile the case.
Hacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Item number 19, discussion of possible action regarding adopting a resolution of necessity and authority to institute condemnation proceedings against property owners to acquire driveway easements for public highway purposes required for a proposed construction project to widen and improve the Spunky Creek Bridge on East Apache Street, also known as Rice Street, in Catoosa, Rogers County, Oklahoma, with Department of Transportation and federal participation, job number, uh, federal aid projects numbers are reflected in your agenda. Here's the resolution. I make a motion to approve.
Do we have a number on the resolution?
It is number.
Well, it's 2014-.
It's 2014-46.
Make motion to approve.
Hacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, I see Mr. Oh. Was that included in that, in that?
You had mentioned it in 16, you, now that you've passed 19, uh, uh, to formalize that, I would recommend you that you, uh, retain Mr. Ritchie.
I'll make a motion that we retain, uh, Mr. Kim Ritchie.
Hacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Hey, let's go back up under unfinished business. Item number four. Discuss and possible action regarding consider and adopt a resolution appropriating certain sales tax, sales and use tax proceeds to Rogers County Finance Authority. Mr. Joe Henning is, is here. This was his item, correct? Thank you, sir. What's the, you want to tell us about this?
Oh, uh, in order to accomplish what you intend to accomplish with your sales tax and your use tax, you need to appropriate it to your authority, that's your authority, and then use it for those, for those purposes.
Have you, have you anyone had a chance to look at this? Do you want, would you care to explain exactly what you're, what you mean with doing this?
Yes, sir. Your, your, uh, one-eighth of your sales tax. And it doesn't necessarily apply to your use tax, but one-eighth of your sales tax goes to the reduction of that obligation on the judgment. And the way that's done is it has to go through the authority that did the financing on it so that the authority can admit those funds to the trustee bank and trigger the reduction of the obligation. I know that's all very complicated for just, for just writing a check or a month, but that's what, that's the way it needs to be done.
You have any questions about this? Is your recommendation?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
Okay. I'm going to make a motion, uh, to adopt the resolution and see where, what number, which resolution?
Um, we haven't given it one yet. We can, Teresa, do you want to run down there and see what resolution it is?
We need to wait on that one then, Mr. Iskey, until it has a, uh, resolution number? Or is it, is it, uh, can it be contingent upon the assigning of that number?
Without a number, your official record is not going to be complete. Would be my thought. Sorry?
Okay. Is this the actual original?
This is what he mailed to us.
The what?
This is what he mailed to us. I think it'll be number 47.
So 20, it will be, do you think it'll be 2013?
It'll be 2017.
It'll be 2014, you make changes?
Yes.
I'll wait until she gets that.
While you're waiting, I can give you transcripts that are permissive of this particular tax. On the county card. Attorney friend, Carter.
Forty-seven?
2014-47?
Yes.
Make motion to, uh, adopt Resolution Number 2014-47.
Hacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay. Thank you, lady. Mr. Armstrong. Under item 17, grants. Number one, discussion of possible action regarding authorization for chairman to sign environmental review comment letters regarding the new CDVG projects. Uh, this is for rural water District Number Three and rural water District Number 16. Okay, Mr. Andy Armstrong.
Recently, you accepted two awards just a month ago. And what we've done is prepared the environmental review letters that go after the various agencies. The county planner will be one of those. And, uh, we'll get responses back from those and then come back to you eventually. Forty-five days are now with applying, uh, regulations. But this starts the filing with the process, so we recommend that you should, you all advise to sign the letter.
Motion to approve. Second.
Hacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm?
Aye.
Motion's been carried and approved.
Okay, and item number two under grants, discussion of possible action regarding authorization for chairman to submit a second financial drawdown request for 15-221 CDVG ED12, Court of Catoosa. This is for TMK IPSCO Railway.
Mr. Zigg, uh, the construction contractor, Cherokee Pride, is, is about halfway finished with the project. And the formula that we came up with for participation, uh, CDU project funds covers about half of this construction cost. The port and TMK are all first putting the other half of it. So this $40,000 request just represents a second increment of funding. Uh, they're still working on this upgrade. Uh, the rail guys will come in in about a few more weeks. But by the middle of November, the, the project should be finished.
Would you, uh, explain that this is not, where this money comes from?
The CDVG program is, is, uh, through the, the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development. In the state of Oklahoma, the Oklahoma Department of Commerce administers those dollars and creates a program whereby you, as a commissioners, as a county, can access those for economic development purposes. So we, about a year ago, we put together a CDVG project that split funding for about a half million dollar worth of work, uh, between the court, the company, and the CDVG program. The rail spur itself is a whole, is owned by the, by the authority, by the court. Uh, so we're making, uh, we're investing public dollars on public improvements.
Andy, will it be one more draw on this or?
Probably two more draws.
One more and then final?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there, there's still about 45 days out of getting the rail spur completed.
Any questions, gentlemen? Motion to approve. One second.
Hacker?
Aye.
Delozer?
Aye.
Halm? Motion's been carried and approved.
Thank you, Mr. Armstrong. Okay, now back to item number 20. Announcer, regarding county events and status updates for comments and discussion from county departments and elected officials as follows. National Guard Administrator, Director Hamilton.
We have some scheduled meetings this week. I'm meeting with, uh, Chief Burke to discuss dispatch, uh, tomorrow. We have a trust and denture meeting on Thursday. We do have a weekly meeting with Motorola, it's a conference call. I have, uh, Jerry Smidl and David Puckett attending or participating in that meeting just to discuss the movement of our radio system. And, uh, dispatch, some of dispatch personnel and I are undertaking SOMS training on Friday. And that's all I have.
Questions, gentlemen? Thank you, Director Hamilton. Assessor's office. Building operations and maintenance?
Order bays.
Morning.
Tomorrow will be out for training, so tomorrow, uh, I'll come in early, but I'll be heading out to do some training with P cars and skills for all of it, so I'll be out doing that. Thursday, I'm going, I'm taking Thursday off to go with Catoosa Public Schools as a sponsor to the fair with, uh, second grade, so. Yes, it'd be lots of fun that side. I guess this will be my third year of it, so I'm getting good at it. Uh, talked to DT Demolition this morning, they're coming right along. They, they feel like probably by the end of the week, they're going to have everything graded. They'll have a dozer in in the next couple of days. Depending on how soil testing goes, they're going to be pretty well wrapped up. He said, then, uh, that'll leave them still to sidewalks to get up, so they'll have to move the fence. But I want to get all the dozer, dozer work and everything leveled. He said that should be finished up this week.
That's good.
Any questions?
Any questions, gentlemen? Thank you, Director Bays. Uh, county clerk?
Nothing to report, sir.
Court clerk?
Nothing to report.
District attorney's office?
Nothing, thank you.
Election board?
We have a small election going on, uh, Chaco Macy and Collinsville Public Schools. So just a few precincts open.
Okay, thank you. Emergency management? Director Stokes?
Uh, just a question, as past week, I attended the Oklahoma Local Emergency Planning Committee Conference and brought home some valuable information for our, our local emergency planning committee. And, uh, we passing that on in next week's meeting there. Um, also, our alert system, I'm working with rural water District Three right now, Bobby Alberti. She is going to be kind of my water district person for the alert system, send out water outages, things of that nature. Hoping in the future that she can actually do it for all the water districts, so I don't have one person at each water district. She'll, she'll be my water district contact and they'll, hopefully they can all work together on that. Um, tomorrow, I'm going to be working with, uh, Chuck, uh, I have a good amount of currents with Oklahoma Emergency Management on SLA grant, close it out, I'll try to close that out for the year. Make sure we've got all our, all our ducks in a row on that. Uh, we've got a chemical subcommittee meeting Wednesday at CFS Industries. And, uh, Friday, I've got a new directors meeting with Oklahoma Emergency Management, believe in the skill. It's where that's at, I don't have a place with me right now, but that's all I've got.
Any questions? Um, you're referring to the Rogers County Emergency Alert System?
Yes, sir.
And the water?
Okay.
And you can sign up free at www.rogerscounty.org?
That is affirmative.
Okay, just a little reminder, get a call if you, have you had, have you been doing tests on that system?
Oh, I've sent out several real alerts.
Yeah, I've got some real ones, but I didn't know how to test them.
I, I just sent one out for Commissioner Delozer on the street closing. I actually re, resent that yesterday, well, the weekend, and tried to catch people. Uh, I was hoping you got that, I attached you to it. That way, we, where people, road closures and such, that way they can plan their routes and not be upset about it. So we've used it with great success, had some great feedback, I've had very little complaints. I've had, only had one true complaint on the system and that was somebody that was getting heat alerts and at three o'clock in the morning. And I, I showed them how to go back in and we took the heat alerts off there, so they wouldn't get those any longer. But, but they had signed up for that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay.
And I, human resources?
My newsletter, um, your newsletter from the county is, um, attached to your, uh, pasta, everyone should have received one. Uh, you also received a letter in the mail from me, um, it's regarding the Oral Care Act and our health insurance. Just if any of your employees have questions, there's no change to our plan. We met all the minimum values, but by law, you need to send them out. So they're very confusing. If they have questions, they can call me, but nothing has changed. They don't need to do anything. Um, still working on our open enrollment health fair for November sixth and seventh. And Friday, the OSU extension office is hosting a lunch and learn for us. It's going to be a new thing, reoccurring the first Friday of every month where county employees and state employees can come in and they're going to teach us, um, new skills on how to cook different types of things, healthy ways. And just bring your sack lunch and come in.
All right. Any questions for Director Belling? Okay, IT? Fining commission? Okay. Judicial? O.S.U. extension?
Um, nothing to report, Janice. Um, Crainer will actually be teaching the lunch and learns. Um, and I believe that is the, kind of the theme is taking a meal and making it healthy, basically. And there'll be several different types of those type of lessons, so. Um, still working with Tulsa State Fair and then on the Ag side of things, um, we'll be doing an Annie's Project starting October, uh, 22nd, so.
All right. Thank you. Sheriff's office?
Nothing's done.
Okay, and treasurer? Okay, item number 22, public comments and responses from board members. Ms. Wilken?
I wanted to know if you could elaborate, maybe explain a little bit better about the, uh, finance authority taking part of the, um, sales tax and use tax? Certain sales and use taxes, is what it says?
I would ask you to get with the attorney on that one. That's, I mean, that's a complicated matter and I think the attorney could answer that better.
Okay, I can meet with him, that's fine. I just wanted to know, as far as the use tax is concerned, uh, can you comment as to, uh, what portion of the use tax is going to be allocated to the finance authority? And, and why it's being changed from RC to where it's currently allocated through to pay the courthouse bond?
You, you really, that, that's a legal question, really. You need to talk with Mr. Joe Henning and, and he could probably explain that in a, in a way that.
Well, I asked him a little, and he told me to ask you, so that's why I'm asking you.
What are you telling this on me for, Mr. Joe Henning?
It was your turn.
Yeah, but I would ask him. If you, if, could you explain that to her, I mean, prior to or something? Yeah, thank you.
Okay, and then, um, Okay, and then, I know I had another question. I have, oh, sorry, I had a little moment there. I think it was simple. You wanna ask somebody else and come back to me, 'cause I...
You're the only one with your hand up. Does anybody else have any question while she's looking her notes over? And we're back to you.
Oh, I know what it was.
Yes, ma'am.
I wanted to ask about Sam's Club. If you guys are going to open that up to them to come in for your health fair, are you gonna open up opportunities for other area vendors that wanna come in and set up a table and sell to your employees?
I would have, personally, I would have no problem with that whatsoever. They, they approached us and asked if they could get on the agenda to present this to employees for Rogers County, and, you know, so we let them come in. And I, the health fair thing, I think is just HR and Mr. Rhodes came up with a venue for that, but no, I think that'd be great for area businesses and different ones to come in.
That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions or, or comments? Thank you. And item number twenty-three, payment of purchase orders from all parks. Is that all right, sir?
So what do you have in mind?
They scream that.
Hey, Mr. Floyd?
Yes, Lord.
I'm sure I didn't remember eleven, there was a problem. Who is it? Oh, who? What is it, fifty-seven years?
Oh, yes, you did.
Well, they did.
They did, ten some ways.
That's right, correct. Offensively, offensively, I, I've been down back there, their offensive coordinator.
At this point, you're going to give him his future.
Oh, yes, you.
Yeah.
You get in with one yard wide and you draw a pass.
I'm excited about that.
The odds are, you're good for all sports, which is necessary.
Yeah, that was, that was.
Wow, so that was, so that's what you're pressing. If there's anything we can do for something else, okay.
Thank you. Did he, did he answer the questions for you?
It was a kid.
No.
Now, there's, I love it.
Cool, cool. It's a tree.
Yeah, it's not, that's how I like it. I love cooking. I replace sour cream. Yeah. Not bad. Yeah. So I like that there. I eat with walnuts, with walnuts in our meal every day. So I buy that there. And is that kind of great, you have, there's like three or four different things that you buy.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Little kiwi fruit. Because they're very much, it's a good thing I'm in Jersey. You know, do you have? I have one.
Maybe because they're just one document to sign, or two.
Well, there were two sets of letters, so there's probably about fifteen or twenty. He'll have to, the interloables, uh, I'm on him. I'm up for trying to look at. As soon as I get the, the district to sign those interloable agreements, I'll bring others.
All these letters.
The letters.
I have to wait and put those in.
Okay. Your individual letters, so you can play with that a little bit, go to nine, five, or something like that, whatever it takes. But if you wanna do that first, which you need to do this week, probably. They're all, they're all ready, they're all ready to go, but like you said, on your letterhead?
Yes, it's good.
You can shrink it and, and, and use your letterhead.
I'll have one of my people do it.
The interloables? You guys, like you said, you have to sign. I just sent that in.
When they have the search, they look at these.
And I actually give them a call.
Yours laying down, not here.
Nelson?
Yes.
Have Teresa come?
Yeah.
Okay, good, yeah.
Apologize, one sixty-nine, we can't park.
Where are your old days?
Four miles back, back to crack. I was on it.
Yeah, I think so. I was on it for forty-five minutes.
Did you pause it?
No.
Okay.
No, no, I'm good.
One sixty-nine, one sixty-nine for two, I'm sure, was it?
I didn't get, I didn't get that. I got off.
They have, they have one of those, what I saw, dude, some, BM special. I imagine one sixty-nine.
This was one sixty-nine heading north. Where you go back around to the airport.
I love nothing.
Yeah, that's sort of like, um, been a bit, yeah, it's like, so a lot of little, you got a lot of rocks, a lot of course.
I know, but you don't, you don't use them that much. Oh, yeah. Like I said, I just don't know those designs.
Point out, Nelson? Thank you.
They're good, they're good.
Melt in your mouth, on your head.
You might want, thank you.
Okay.
Learning to learn.
Yes, tomorrow.
Yeah, that are, that are, that's gonna be discussing. Oh, the other day.
It's right out of the damn, dude, he got forty-four. I'm not, I can fix it by old, for lunch, breakfast.
Okay.
That won't be long. I could have bought that lunch, that ten minutes, my best serving.
Dang it, something.
Oh, then.
This way.
Carrots. The recipe I was looking for. But just, you know. I'll tell you what I do. Most of the time, I make a one pan, and I'll put some, uh, seven, I took, I find little chunks of, tiny, and not that much, and then I put ground rice and a couple of used diced tomatoes, celery, onions, or whatever. I make a one pan, you know, it's one pan. And then I keep, like, 'cause I've, I've read, you know, places that frozen and chips are on the, it's, it's, so I, one of the things I learned is, uh, of slices, you know, and all good, like, a little cut of, like, a potato. I love, I love, I love it, all the ingredients. It's the technique. I am? Yes. Is it still kind of red, crispy?
They really hit them.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, something, something Jones, wasn't it?
A little bit of garlic, fresh garlic.
Something Jones. How you back, I was usually very good. Yeah, they were, was, Joe Cole.
See, it's kind of the, the other flavor.
No, no, no.
Olive oil. Fresh jar.
Well, they made the lighter, but they're heavy. Terry's made some good. He wasn't working down there. They made, they made, they made some single. Yeah, they were, they were the spinoff.
I was four years. You know, I'm a pretty, I'm a pretty, I'm my own. And people, so I think. I use, I love, I get green, and waxing. You know, if you manage, it stays good for you. You diss away, diss away. A chicken breast cut into small pieces. Right. Yeah. Yeah, yeah. And then I do, I have, I slice it and saute it, and then add the chicken back in. And now, somebody told me that they took their, their old, probably good, the over with the patties and maybe some pepper, if you have some, a little bit of. I just, you know what, I just, I just, I just, every day, anything I can say.
Seems like you work this way.
You know, just to, I'm going, anyway, I just.
Um, got that, and we got some others.
Any veggies, I'm, I'm not a taker, but I'm, I buy a sausage, and I'm, I'm, I just, please, and then, oh, turn on, and it's, I have. Soy sauce. Oh, so, you know, I like, I never get my, I like, I like, actually, I love. Oh, that'd be good. Yeah, or, yeah. That's, that's, I, that's, yeah, I like. Not now, it's a coaching. Because a lot of salad, you know, a lot of these places will sell salad, potatoes, and those, these are, but I like. I like any beans. I do, too. You know, something else.
One good chair. Perfect.
Tim Appleby, you know, asking.
Um, yes, I know. Favorite. Somebody just wanted one. And you put the bacon in it, on the side, crispy bacon.
Nobody can go real aggressive. Bring that money back, kids, so we need to stop all jobs.
Don't you favor kind of? I like.
It's gone.
Is that a stuffed animal? Yeah, I think that's here. What name is this? Uh, everybody gets my job.
My friend, I mean, she was starting in her.
How you paying that?
He made it. I've got one she made and.
They, they, they really.
He's still engineered.
Like jalapeno jelly. Merry jelly.
Good looking.
Yeah, been engineered.
Three.
Yeah, that is.
Yeah, but it's been engineered and re-engineered, called the engineer.
I found a good grocery store. You're inspired, right?
I got an agreement. I don't mess with you. It was a learning experience. Yeah, they are.
I'm creeping up on props. They're not making, not like the back, except they're washers.
The other washers. And. Big picture. The text on the template. Have these wash things off. Where's that? That romance. Right there.
Which is a duck. I'm not really.
Just there. Finally. Like, cause I grew up in the fifties. Or. I could be great. I'm a manager.
Her name's Kelly Norris.
Yeah, yeah. Not yet, they get their.
There's the rest of this.
I know. Did anyone have a neighbor? I am.
A lot of work.
He was just.
Just want to talk.
Let me thank you, Tom. Do it.
They get, they get more.
Okay, girl.
All right, sure.
You had to have a job. Have a good one.
I will.
See you.
I won't be here next week when I'm in Nashville. See you, Grandbabies.
Oh, okay.
You had another job. Say now, Ross, you're next up another thousand years. That's a flag and move from one side to the other direction. She's having fun. Good work.
Mister Alger.
Yes. Sure. How's the breakfast done? Get you many?
You know, my wife's traveling, so it's really. I just, uh.
Where's your trip?
Greece.
Oh, really? You can go there?
Well, yeah, I heard our daughter. And that would be thirty.
I like, that'd be pretty, I'd like to go.
I went there a lot.
Oh, have you?
I worked in Europe a lot. Had an opportunity.
I bet it is.
A little bit different, you know, everything over there, you have to go with a good attitude, because if you don't.
Where are they going, Greece?
Uh, they're going, see, they're going Santorini and Mykonos and Athens. And Scathos or someplace, an island. Mykonos is spectacular.
Greece, I've never been there.
Spend a lot of time there. Having a little five star with toxin, Washington, a Heineken. Yeah, brother.
This, this is over here.
Like diamond.
Let me explain. This is for a Duke of Ohio. Okay, y'all sign it, we get the deal, we give the district two, or three, or whatever it was. They take it to the tag agency. Then they give us information we need and we get back, we attach it to their back. And, you know, they don't do VOs and so.
Yeah, I was just asking, cause it was one sheet.
Oh, tag agent deal?
Yeah, I can tag, yeah. So we got to do, just one. I'll be here.
But I have your dog, Dave.
Oh, it's my platter. Yeah, I could write it for.
You should.
It's a good time, set the questionable file. It's always good after, after it's over.
I, um, back when I was teaching, I had the opportunity to hear a guy survive an Holocaust.
Wow.
And he, uh, he was an Oscar. And his, he did go to the press and, and he, his job there was loading. Lot dead bodies to, uh, where I was taking them to the chambers to burn. Really? Yeah. And, uh, he said that when he came to the United States, that he couldn't speak a lick of English. And he said, like, well, you never seen Statue of Liberty and come in there, he said, my first job was washing dishes. He said, I did such and such, different people kept saying, you know, he got a very good job. Speak English and, uh, he moved up and, uh, he, uh. Different people kept saying, he got a lot of book. He said, I got a book, they said, well, you can get somebody to write a book, you just tell your story, and he said, I'll write a book. Well, that's what he did.
Oh, good.
And this book, at the end of his talk, burned in both of his arms for a number. That was. I was wondering if he had a number on him. And he said, you know, like, don't mistake, there are two things that you have in this country that need to be guarded. Always, never take it for granted, and that's freedom and opportunity. This guy now, it's been less than twenty years ago, but he had the largest, either Konosaki or Yonohawa dealership, and he was playing on Dallas. I mean, he was very wealthy. I'll be just going around, uh, speaking certain. And I had this book, and it was an interesting reading. Uh, how through telling his story, he got over the hate that he had about, about. It was really an interesting book, I'd like to read it. How was he? How was he hearing? He's young boy. Young boy, uh. He, uh, and again, it looked to somebody reading, you know, what happened. He had the tools away.
Yeah.
Or to let people borrow.
Yeah, I understand. They had, there was probably here, they came to RSU, who was, uh, prisoner of war and, uh, he had, um. For eight and a half years.
Really?
And they came.
Was that lives? It was one of, there's a little lives.
I got his book. He had, he, he wrote a book.
You know, they have IPOWs, and you've really never heard that. I tried to buy, they don't, I don't think a lot of them like to talk.
No, this guy, this guy wrote a book and, uh. They had, they could communicate, they, they devised a system of communication.
Right.
In there without talking.
Really? Tapping on the wall.
Tapping on the wall. If you take a box, for A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, K, and so, and then a couple of letters that they don't use. Because there's, you know, there's twenty-five in a box, five by five boxes and, uh. And so they, if they wanted to do an A or B.
I'll pay you dollars.
There'd be first, first, first row, first, you know, A. And, and he could do that, like a title, you know?
How long was he there? Eight years?
Eight years.
Gosh. Luckily, he got to come home.
They beat him every day.
That's what I've heard.
Every day. Now he lives in, uh, near Pensacola. I got his book, and he signed a book. It's amazing. Unbelievable.
What they have to endure. What was his name?
It'd be wood.
Yeah.
I can't think of his name.
They, they lived through it, too. Like you said, get beaten every day.
Yeah, and, and a lot, and, and fight to live.
Yeah. Instead of, instead of giving up and. It wasn't Charles, probably gave up.
Oh, sure.
It wasn't Charles Sasse, was it?
No.
Have you read any of his?
I think his name was Robert. You heard.
Who's Charles Sasse? I, I don't know if he was appealed to him or not, but he was, he was over Vietnam, and he came back with the Cayman. Chicago policeman, he writes, he writes books. About Vietnam? What, just a little bit of everything, law enforcement, Vietnam. He was a, he actually was a Green Beret. And then when he got out, he became, he joined the Navy and became a Navy SEAL.
Wow.
Yeah. And, uh, tell me, but I, I used to shoe his horses for him. And we, I was down at his house, we'd walk into his studio where he writes, and there's, there's these poison. Blowgun, blow dart guns, and there's a bear rug on the floor, and I mean, it's real. And I'm looking, and then there's a whole bunch of piranha teeth necklaces. And I said, where, you know, I'm thinking maybe, you know, he caught it with his bare hands. I said, where'd you get that? He said, I traded a couple of Pepsi T-shirts for that, down in where, you know, where it's from, there in South America. He said, the, the people down there, anything American with Pepsi or Coke or blue jeans or, he traded for these necklaces. And blowguns.
The thing about, the thing about going to Europe, it's gonna cost you more for a lower standard of living.
Yeah.
But it's just different, you know, it's just definitely.
It's not someplace you wanna live, it's someplace you wanna go live.
Well, the only reason I wouldn't wanna live there is because of their medical. I can tell you a quick story, I was wearing a nuclear plant over there, and, and all their nuclear plants have doctors and everything on, on site. So I had a filling break, crack. So I went to the dentist with an interpreter. And, uh, there was a woman. Told her I got a toothache, and so she looked at me, I sit, sit down a chair, and I look at it, and she looks in there and she says, this guy. And, uh, he said, the filling's cracked. I said, well, fix it. He said, no, she's gonna pull a tooth out. I said, no, 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 fixed a filling. Yeah? And so he said, he says something to her, he said, can you fix a filling? She said, yeah, I can fix it. And fixed a filling.
Yeah. We call it tin.
Okay. So her drill was like a sewing machine with a trap, you know?
Oh, yeah.
Where you go like this, and going up and around like this, you can almost count the revolutions on this drill.
Oh, slow drill.
I said, okay. Put some cotton up in my mouth and cotton little thing, okay, so hanging on this thing. I get some drill starts, I said, wait, 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 time out, what about the locate? She said, what?
Oh, mine.
You know, you're looking at this stuff here.
It's good old socialized medicine, you gotta tough it out, you know, and look, oh, Lord. I had fingerprints in his chair, but you know what, she never hurt me.
Really?
She ground that thing out of there, the old one, put in a new one, and she never hurt me. But I'd.
Beat a line.
Sweat up my forehead like it was, like, sign of. Unbelievable, she never hurt me. But she did catch the.
Used to go.
Cotton. I'm thinking, look around inside her cheek, and I'm thinking, the cheek's gone, you know.
Guess.
When it was a cotton, so she started laughing.
Still water?
But, you know, she never hurt, but my point is, socialized medicine, you know, there's, there's some things that.
Cause I mean, I don't got your name, boy, I got here.
Is, is weight.
Yeah.
Go to growth on the back of her neck.
Yeah. Lived in.
First she went to the doctor years and still. There's five Americans there, the sniper.
Been in Kansas since seventy-nine.
And our wives.
Nineteen years over.
So she went to the doctor, and the doctor said.
Nice.
A, a little cyst, he said, we'll take care of that. She said, oh, okay. Well, while he's saying that, he picked up his scalp, just slid, slid it open.
My goodness.
Took it out with some tweezers.
Oh, yeah, they did. Red, Craig with Redwood.
Put it right there, okay.
Sabatia.
She was there, I heard it there.
Yeah. My goodness. Oh, Sabatia's. Willows. We'll probably know about. Baseball, baseball. Texas. They, they cut me open right there. See, I think. Took that thing.
Yeah.
I, I look for.
Locate or something. Oh, yeah, okay, well, but she was just standing there. And he was standing behind her, all of a sudden, a zip.
You know, Texas has got enough. They'd be in there for.
Started crying.
I would do.
Every year.
That'd be the top ten every year.
Well, here's Baldwin. And other people about really gonna learn from Texas.
Exactly.
They're getting beat the kids in Texas.
Take care, man.
Take care, see you later.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. All right, I'll see you then. All right, you too. Say hello to your wife.
I will, she just called me.
All right. Yeah, they, uh, there's no excuse for them not to be the top ten every year.
Yeah, I think Max in a little trouble himself.
Yeah, and I think they'll fire him before the season, go away, so they can have a good recruiting year. In that.
Yeah, I think he's toast.
Kinda like a guy from USC that pulled him off the bus, he thought he was coming back for his bag, and fly home and get his bag. And fired him right there.
Well, that guy. He was a Tennessee, you know, they're talking about.
Kevin?
Yeah, Lane Kevin. I said, you don't need this anymore. He goes, I gotta get my bag, you can get it when you get home, give him a point.
Now, his dad's with Dallas, isn't he?
Probably back.
He's, he's coordinator for Dallas, he's pretty sharp, that's why they're playing a lot better football this year than they have in the past, he does a good job.
Yeah, Lane was a, you know, real, real young, beginning kind of dog, he's hitting it. Man on academy, you know what I'm saying?
He wants history. Yeah. San Diego beat them.
Yeah.
Who? Oh, no, the Cowboys.
San Diego, listen. They have really, they should have been one of the premier clubs the last five, six years.
Good, I, Texas did.
But, uh, they got Rivers as their quarterback and.
They, uh, did they play this last weekend? I didn't hear, I didn't hear anything about.
You might.
I know when Dallas loses, Oklahoma State loses the same weekend.
I didn't hear them play.
What happened, son?
It's a bad.
This weekend?
All I'm saying, must have just played a heck, it didn't happen for a while.
All I can say is, boomers here. Well, they, they played. I think they're in trouble with their offensive coordinator. Yeah, we do.
Who's that?
Oklahoma State. He may be on a plane right now.
Well, I don't know.
He, uh, they played better, they played better defend, they played better defensively, but offensively. No. Would you say that's late in the day?
I think it is.
Late, late in the day, yeah, that's, that's good now.
But you know what, look here. So it's just like. And Jim Verica, they shot fifty-nine, okay, the next day he shot seventy-one on the same course.
Oh, he has bad.
Hey, you just don't have it every time you go out. And it's just like, and here, and here's how each ball and hitting it perfect. He said, when I shot fifty-nine, he said, every, every deal, I, I hit a driver, look, I wound up three, uh, one thirty. Which is right on my number, you know, how far you hit a club. He said, the next day I wound up one thirty-nine, nine yards difference. So you have to, you know, you have to judge a little harder, a little easier. He said, when you wind up, when you have days, when you wind up right on your number, that's when you good. When you ask, well, I hit a little harder, a little easier, it's just not, you know, and they know it, you know. Probably always have what they do.
Did you just say it's a sound, this isn't not for me, is it?
It's not for you, no.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, you put it in my chair.
No, it's, uh.
I, I, I saw what it is, it's just.
Curse of the science is, uh. But these go to, these are. Like all.
That's the one that's, just put them there.
But I gotta get them signed, something there, one there.
Well, I talked to Mr. Joe Manny about that use tax stuff, and he said that basically the use tax is gonna be, part of the use tax is gonna be designated to pay the one cent. What you guys vote, what the people voted on in August. what you guys vote, what the people voted on in August. Subportion of the use tax is going to go pay part of that one eighth of a cent that's dedicated to pay the judgment.
I thought it's going to be out of sales tax. That's what I thought.
Well, he told me it was going to be part of the use tax was going to be used to pay on that judgment, which I didn't understand that.
I don't think so.
And then, I, because I asked him why the use tax was included, I moved that over to finance authority. And he said it was because of that. And I said, well, it wasn't on the ballot, so I'm not sure how you could use the use tax to pay towards that. And he said you could, you could use the use tax for whatever you wanted. And I said, well, I thought the use tax was dedicated to the courthouse bond. And he said, well, it is, but it also can be used for this. So I'm, I'm still confused. I don't know if you guys have any answers for my questions, but I don't, I don't understand how the use tax can be used for five different things. And when the bond says it's supposed to be solely used for the courthouse.
Well, that's a legal question. I believe he's talking about excess, uh, unrestricted money. That's not the same thing as the entire amount being dedicated, but.
Well, I guess, I just, maybe it would help me if I understood what you guys actually dedicated to the finance authority today. Is that excess or is that in general?
Didn't Mr. Joe Manning not answer your?
No, I tend to get the answers, but he really didn't explain it to me and. So that's why I don't, I don't know.
There's some rules on. Yeah, I mean, I'm not going to hurt nobody. It's just his facts, but we've got some different ones, like for that furniture and stuff, for the bomb.
Right.
So I don't know about that. Yeah. Furniture, I hope they're on for second time from.
I mean, I have a problem talking about it at the meeting if you want, I just need somebody to explain to me a little bit.
I mean, honestly, if, if the lawyer explained it to you, I don't know what I could add to that.
Well, I.
He, he's the, he's the.
You guys voted on it.
Professional. I know what I was going.
Well, do you mind explaining that to me? Because maybe that will clear it up. Because that, that's my question, I don't really understand what, from what he told me, didn't make any sense.
Did you speak to him with a lawyer?
Well, they do that sometimes.
I mean, that, that happens a few times.
I need like plain English, what did you vote on? What does it mean? I would have to understand it.
There's probably.
The better? Nobody.
Is there anything to sign in here?
No. Somewhere, Nelson. Here is it.
I think somebody probably called it on my board.
I sent an email to you.
Thank you. Okay.
One of these? Oh, wrong.
Is there somebody else that I should talk to about it first?
The what?
Is there somebody else I should talk to about it that can maybe help me?
This is for, how you apps for the law and stuff.
I'll put it.
Put it up front here.
Do you, Robin, do you know, do you have an understanding of it? Like the, part of the use tax is being moved over to the finance authority? I think I understand, but I'm, I'm not very good at explaining it's not the right yet.
And what was this one for?
To take.
Aren't you supposed to sign all the documents?
No.
Wait, Alfred, are you going to say?
I don't, I think we, uh.
I think it's a little long.
And you signed.
I never know.
You were in charge of.
I just.
Well, you're the one doing it, so. That's what I, I thought that's what we done.
There's been no difference. I'm happy to sign.
Oh, you're the one.
You're the chairman, so I'm just going to leave it alone.
I'm going to have you. Fuck it, one floor. We had.
What is this?
We had talked about since you were.
Such a resolution.
What's all this? Is this all? Is this all nine one ones?
It's just thirty days, isn't it, isn't it? September, we're showing.
That's what I thought they had.
Third day.
Yeah, you put nine thirty-one on there, not a nine thirty-one.
That is last day.
This is the thirtieth?
Yeah.
I don't think so, I think this is the thirty-third.
Can't wait to get to tomorrow.
How many, how many I put? I signed that way today.
Thirty days, that's September, April, June, and then all the rest of the year. Twenty-eight. The lead year. I just think that.
Okay, you know. Thank you, gentlemen. We done? It's all, uh.
Let's go with the camp.
You don't have a motion back in town or no?
Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. And we have a motion to pay first orders from all departments. Second.
Hi, Eric.
Aye.
Delozer.
Aye.
Helm. Motion's been carried and approved.